Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for June 14th, 2021. If you would please stand and join me with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here, here.
Ms. Hoppe.
Present.
Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
And Ms. Nosler-Bett.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors in your packet, you have city council minutes for May 24, 2021, and study session notes of June 7, 2021. Are any corrections to be noted to either of these? We'll let them stand. We'll let them stand as presented. Are there any changes to the agenda? We will let the agenda stand as presented. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under citizens' right to speak. If you, we have a sign-up sheet in the back that Mr. Dahl is bringing forward, so I will call the names out, and when I do, if you would come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself with your first name and your last name, and if you would please spell your last name for the record, and give us your address. Then you will have three minutes to, to address the council, and I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? And we also have, I believe, a virtual Zoom format going, and I'm going to ask Ms. Scheck if we have anyone on the Zoom line that would like to, like to join us. You may do so also. I don't, I don't have a screen for that, but we'll see. Is there anyone that would like to join us in citizens' right to speak?
We have, Mayor, thank you, we have Mr. Justin Conyers with his hand up. I'll unmute him, and then a reminder to others on Zoom, just please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak.
All right. Mr. Conyers, if you'd please join us and introduce yourself and give us your address, then you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Conyers, you're unmuted, so if you have something to say, please speak up.
Sorry, point of privilege. I was just text from a constituent saying that there's no visual or audio online.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Let us take a quick pause right now and see if we've got video connections.
Ms. Dozeman, does it say anything like YouTube, Channel 8? Was it just online?
It seems to be from the public standpoint, because I can see it up here.
Okay, we still seem to have a technical difficulty.
One second, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Let me, let's just continue our pause here for just a minute or two, and we'll see if we can iron out the technical issues. Mr. Mayor, you could do the approval of the minutes while we're waiting. You know, we've already done that.
We have?
We did. We approved the minutes and we approved the agenda. You may have been getting, retrieving our sign-in sheet. While we're having a short pause, I want to, want to thank all the staff for the hard work they've done to get us back on the dais, and thank the counselors for, for being all here in person, and, and for the public here in person at City Hall. It's been a long, it's been a long time, but we're glad to be here and, and be here safely, so.
Mayor, we're hearing from a number of others that are seeing it both on Zoom and on YouTube at this point, so it appears that perhaps that there could be something going on with that particular viewer's technology.
Okay. Mr. Justin Connors or Conyers, I'm sorry, we can't get his comments. If he wanted to be in the meeting, he could certainly, do we have another, another telephone number, another call-in opportu, uh, number that we can patch into the?
I can certainly ask someone else who's on here to perhaps speak up, just to ensure that we're, we can hear people. So I'm actually, let's see here. Oh, I've got someone else with their hand up, Mayor, so let's try that.
Okay.
We have Mark Reagan.
Yep, hi, Mark Reagan, Piper Sandler, just trying to help see if you can hear us.
Okay, we could hear you, Mr. Reagan. Thank you very much. And that, was that just, it was not real clear, was that a call just to confirm that we've got, we've got communications link?
Yeah, so that was just the person coming over soon. So we'll just read out the phone number. Thank you, Mary Ann, in case Mr. Conyers is having a hard time and would like to call in. That number is 669-900-6833. The access code is 857-0138-8673, and the passcode is 884510. At this point, we're fairly convinced that everything is working on this end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, I think what we'll do is move into our, move, move down in our agenda, and, and if we have a call that we weren't able to take earlier, we'll certainly make arrangements to bring this party into our meeting. So thank you. So we will move to agenda item number one. This is, uh, being introduced by Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce resolution number 29-2021, a resolution concerning the proposed finance of certain activities and undertakings within the I-70 Kipling Corridor urban renewal plan area and the proposed issuance of a certain tax increment revenue funding and improvement bonds by the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority in connection therewith, declaring the city council's present intent to appropriate funds to replenish the reserve, securing such bonds if necessary, and authorizing a cooperation agreement and other related actions. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, will be issuing tax-exempt bonds this July for various capital projects within the I-70 Kipling Corridor urban renewal plan area. In order for Renewal Wheat Ridge to receive the highest rating and lowest interest rate on the bonds, it is necessary for city council to approve a replenishment resolution authorizing city manager to replenish the reserve funds on the bonds with general fund reserves in the event that Renewal Wheat Ridge does not have adequate funding to pay annual debt service on the bonds. A coopergration, a cooperation agreement between the city and Renewal Wheat Ridge will require that Renewal Wheat Ridge repay the city for any loan made to replenish the reserve fund.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do, and we have some guests here this evening, too, who will say a few words, but we discussed this in study session last week, and the issue statement is, is fairly succinct and to the point, so I'm not going to go into too much more detail, but Sally Tasker with Butler Snow is the Urban Renewal Authority's bond counsel, and she is here to say a few words about what the replenishment resolution is and what city, the city will be entering into if this is approved this evening. So Sally? And then also, we do have Nate Ekloff with Piper Sandler. He's also working with the Urban Renewal Authority as the underwriter. So if you have any questions more specific about underwriting and the bond amounts and interest rates and things like that, Nate is here, and I believe they have some of their staff online also. Sally.
Hello, Mayor, members of city council, my name's Sally Tasker.
I might have you just move a little closer to the mic or see if you can bring it.
How's that?
There you go. That's better. Thank you very much.
My name is Sally Tasker. I'm here as in Tom-A-S-K-E-R. I am with the firm of Butler Snow in Denver, and we're serving as bond counsel to the Urban Renewal Authority on this. And as you indicated, the resolution before you, we call it a replenishment resolution, the bonds are being issued for various improvement projects in the I-70 Kipling Corridor, and also to refinance a 2018 outstanding loan to get interest rate savings. And so in connection with that, there will be a reserve fund securing the bonds, and they are payable primarily from property tax increment revenues in the plan area, and there will also be a reserve fund that's funded from bond proceeds when the bonds are issued, and that will be about one year's worth of debt service. And so this provides security to the bondholders, the potential investors in the bonds. So the resolution before the city is if the reserve fund is drawn on, because there's not sufficient property tax increment in any particular year or at any payment date to pay those bonds, then the trustee will draw on the reserve fund to pay the bonds. And then if there's not sufficient revenues to replenish that up to the reserve fund level, then the city will be asked if you want to make an appropriation at that time to top off the reserve fund. So if it is, if it is used to, to pay off the, or make debt service payments on the bonds, then you will, this resolution is basically a non-binding statement of present intent. It does not create a debt of the city. The bonds do not become obligations of the city. All that it is, is your intention to consider it in the future, and it also directs your city manager to bring this in front of you. The reason this, that we're doing this is this increases the credit rating on the bonds. So the, the bonds will be rated by credit, credit agency, and if the city adopts this replenishment resolution, the rating will be higher, therefore the interest rate on the bonds and borrowing will be lower. So this will cause savings on the debt service on the bonds. The resolution also approves a cooperation agreement between the city and the authority, so that if in fact the city does replenish the reserve fund, this will be considered a loan to the authority, and it will also be payable from that same source of revenues put on a basis subordinate to the bonds. And so that's, and I think it also says that you will continue to cooperate to make employees available to the URA authority, which you've been doing with your prior bond issues. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'm going to open this up to comments from the public. If you would like to speak on agenda item number one, now is your opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak? You may do so now. Come to the podium, please, and I'll check also with Ms. Scheck to see if anyone is on the Zoom or the telephone or other electronic media, or any other, any other way to contact us and tell us that they'd like to speak. Now is, now's the time to recognize them.
Mayor, I don't see any hands up on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will, we will move forward from our citizens' right to speak on this, and I will open it up to questions from council. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was going to ask this question last week, and I forgot. I know we have similar deals like this going on right now in other places of the city. Have we needed to replenish that reserve before?
We have not.
We have not. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if the staff, there was a question in study session about if there were other properties in the area that may need some sort of funding. Can we just have a brief rundown of what other options there are, because this is on property tax increment only?
Correct, yes. Your question, Ms. Hoppe, is, is will this restrict Urban Renewal Authority from issuing any other debt or bonds or loans in the, in the future? And in this area, that, that is no. This, this is, you are correct, this is just a property tax increment bond, so there is sales tax generated in this area that could be used against a bond, and we believe that there's also additional capacity with the property tax even to additional, to potentially issue more property tax bonds in the future. To do that, there would be a bond test to determine how much capacity is available in the future. And I don't know if Nate, if I covered that correctly, or Sally, and if, in this, this bond they're shooting for right now, Urban Renewal Authority meets tomorrow night to make the final approvals on this, but they're looking at generating about 38 to 40 million net project funds, which, which would be somewhere between 45 and 50 million total bonds with, with the reserve fund and insurance and, and other expenses. So that, that's, we know there's more capacity already in this urban renewal area, and, and again, to specify, this is just for, from the I-70 Kipling Corridor urban renewal area. We have five urban renewal areas in the city, so those areas, we're not using any of the property tax increment in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with respect to the, the debt service, what would be the, the total amount of the reserve fund at any given time?
Do you have those numbers?
My name is Nate Ekloff. I'm a managing director at the firm of Piper Sandler, underwriters for the bonds. So the reserve fund amount is approximately, total amount would be $5,600,000 for the transaction. It could be, it could be less than that. We may size it slightly differently to reduce that. So it's possible that the annual debt service would be as low as about $4 million, so give or take, so between four and five and a half.
Obviously, in this situation, there wouldn't be a circumstance under which the reserve fund would go down to zero, because that would mean there'd be zero sales ta, or zero property taxes being collected.
Correct.
There's no way for the reserve fund to go down to zero, because that would mean that there's no property.
There's no property tax revenue whatsoever. Correct. And I think that would be highly unlikely.
Okay, thank you.
Very highly unlikely.
And then sort of a related question to that, given that we're sort of setting this replenishment commitment, do we have a budget for the commitments that we have out there, or how do we sort of encapsulate the, the sort of obligations that we have? If this is a $5 million obligation, do we have any other sort of outstanding replenishment obligations?
It's a good question. We, we don't specifically budget for replenishment obligations. We, of course, budget for our annual obligations for debt service and all of our S-Step agreements and our TIP agreements. We budget for those annually in the general fund, but we haven't budgeted for replenishment. But, you know, we, we have adequate reserves, I believe, that we could use if we came, if it came to that point.
Got it. I just want to make sure that as we kind of, we're looking at this as though it's the current intent of council to replenish this if it were to come to that, and I want to have a, have a feeling it's somewhere between $0 and $5 million, but it, it's hard to say what we would commit to without knowing what that is, but I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 29-2021, a resolution concerning the proposed financing of certain activities and undertakings within the I-70 Kipling Corridor urban renewal plan area and the proposed issuance of a certain tax increment revenue funding and implement bonds by Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority in connection therewith, declaring the city council's present intent to appropriate funds to replenish the reserve fund, securing such bonds if necessary, and authorizing a cooperation agreement and all other related actions.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 31-2021, a resolution approving a special use permit and height variance to allow a new street, a new freestanding commercial mobile radio service, CMRS facility, on property zone residential 2R2 and located at 7500 West 29th Avenue, case numbers SUP-21-01 and WA-21-02, City Hall Cell Tower. At issue, the applicant is requesting to install a new 140-foot freestanding commercial mobile radio service, CMRS facility, to replace the existing 159-foot CMRS facility located at 7500 West 29th Avenue due to structural issues. The property contains existing municipal government facilities and is owned by the city of Wheat Ridge, and because the property is owned residential 2R2, which does not permit new freestanding CMRS facilities and has maximum height restriction of 35 feet, the, the Community Development Department, in conjunction with the city attorney, has determined this request can be considered through review of a special use permit, SUP, with a height variance through a city council public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution of the council. It is a quasi, it is a public hearing, and it is quasi-judicial. If you intend to speak on this item and are present, please raise your hand or, or affirm that you intend to tell the truth on this matter. Sort of, Mr. Dahl, am I, am I getting this too confusing?
I think in that setting, after the staff report and you, the public, it's by testifying, you have agreed, by testifying here or speaking online, you have agreed to tell the truth as you understand it.
Okay, by testifying or speaking online on this matter, you agree to tell the truth. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our planning manager, Lauren Mikulak, is our presenter this evening.
Okay, Ms. Mikulak.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Lauren Mikulak with the Community Development Department. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So we'll start tonight with a aerial. The subject property we're talking about tonight is where we are, 7500 West 29th Avenue, located at the southeast corner of 29th and Wadsworth, which contains City Hall and Hayward Park. It's about nine acres in size. Beth Eden Baptist Church and School is located immediately to the south, and Stride Community Health Center located immediately to the north, with residential neighborhood beyond to the east. The shaded areas on the screen do represent other jurisdictions, Jefferson County, unincorporated area on the other side of Wadsworth, and Lakewood, south of 26th Avenue. This is an excerpt from the city's zoning map. The two white areas, again, are outside of the city limits. The subject property, as you heard in the introduction, is owned residential 2. We have actually, the city hall has been zoned residentially since incorporation. Government buildings are permitted in the R2 Zone District. You can see from this image that almost all of the surrounding properties share residential zoning as well, with the exception of that medical office building to the north, which is owned planned commercial development. This is an image of the existing tower located on the south side of City Hall. In the code, the city code, this tower is referred to as Commercial Mobile Radio Service Facility. We'll call it CMRS or Cell Tower for ease tonight. This tower was actually built in the 1970s originally, principally to hold communication antenna for the police and fire departments at this, at the time. As cellular communication has become more widespread over the decades, it has been a very desirable location for cellular providers to co-locate their antenna on the tower. The existing structure is actually 159 feet tall. Current CMRS regulations, as you heard in the introduction, are prohibited in the R2 Zone District, and so this structure is considered legally non-conforming. Planning staff did consult with the city attorney and explored sort of a variety of options, variances, special use permits, rezonings, code amendments, and given the fact pattern, the special use permit with a variance is the most appropriate action in this case. For reference, utilities with outside storage and electric transmission towers are permitted by special use in the R2 Zone District as well. A couple more images of the tower taken from the other property lines, looking from the park and from 29th and Wadsworth. It's fairly hidden behind City Hall, but for those who can see it from the neighborhood, it's been in their view sheds for several decades now. The applicant is, has discovered that there are structural deficiencies on the tower, so it does necessitate replacement, and in order to remedy this and to replace the tower, there are three phases of construction proposed. So the first would be to install temporary facilities to ensure that there's no interruption to service for the existing providers on the tower, and then to demo the existing tower. In the construction phase, the new tower would be a monopole design instead of a lattice structure. I'll show you an image of that in a moment, and it's a little bit shorter, actually, 140 feet instead of the 159 we have today, and it would be painted to have a little bit more of a camouflaging effect, a gray or blue. And then ultimately, the temporary facilities would be removed once the tower is complete. Couple of images, bird's eye view, so this is the aerial. We are zoomed in on the south side of City Hall. The entrance to the police department is off the screen, off the top of the screen. So the shading in yellow shows you where the existing tower is and all of the accessory cabinets and equipment on the ground surrounding the tower. The three red boxes shade where the temporary facilities would be for those three respective providers, and you see that again here in this image, which is the site plan view that was provided in the packet, and you can see the wide triangular footprint of the lattice design. We did request a photo simulation. This is actually that middle phase. This is showing what the three temporary facilities would look like. We typically don't allow temporary facilities, that's why that phase is included in the approval tonight. They would range in height from about 40 to 75 feet. And then in the final configuration, the tower and all of those accessory cabinets would be within the same footprint, though the footprint of the actual tower itself would be a little bit smaller with the monopole design. And again, a photo simulation of the ultimate replacement design. So again, a little bit shorter, still antenna projecting, but along that monopole. Section 26, 615 of the zoning code does contain regulations for a variety of different types of cell facilities, roof-mounted, wall-mounted, and freestanding, and the applicable regulations have been met in this case. It is being evaluated as a special use. It's visually screened from adjacent residential development to the extent possible, including the infrastructure on the ground. It meets the R2 accessory structure setbacks, and it's located at the rear of the property, not adjacent to any public street. When we talk about height variances, we do require that the applicant make the justification, and in this case, what we requested were a variety of images from the providers to illustrate that coverage necessitated the taller height. So the code requires in an R2 district that it be no more than the underlying maximum height, which is 35 feet. In this case, it would be 140. So this image, I'll walk you through a series of three, shows that the coverage is better at the taller height. So the image on the left has the coverage at 35 feet. That's the blue blob. The red blob is larger than the blue when it simulates the 75-foot height, which is where the antennas would be for that provider. AT&amp;T provides similar justification in a different AT&amp;T provides similar justification in a different graphic way. The image on the left shows gray areas where the shorter height would produce coverage gaps. Those gray areas are reduced in the image on the right, simulating again the taller height. And lastly, from T-Mobile and Sprint, they have circled on the left the coverage gaps at the shorter height, and those are all but reduced, eliminated at that taller height. The special use process is dictated in the code. It started with a neighborhood meeting in November of 2020. That was a virtual format due to the pandemic. Nobody came in attendance. We have had a public noticing period. You may have noticed the signs when you came in. We have signs on three of the street frontages. We only received one phone inquiry, no written comments in support or opposition, no comments submitted on Wheat Ridge Speaks in advance of tonight's meeting. The special use was referred out to all agencies and city departments, and there were no concerns or objections. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval. We have determined that the property can be served even in this modified condition with the new cell tower. The tower does comply with the applicable regulations, and the criteria for both the special use and the variance have been met. Those were analyzed in detail in the staff report in the packet. There are a series of conditions that we're recommending in association with that approval related to permitting, state and federal regulations, and leases. And notably, the city code does require that we specify whether the SEP runs with the land or with the applicant or for a time period. And in this case, given the investment, we'd recommend that the SEP run with the land. That is all I have for my presentation. The applicant is in attendance, so I will go ahead and load her slides as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Starke, members of the city council, public. My name's Sarah Chimalak. I'm a land services member, or manager with Black and Beach, representing AT&amp;T as the main applicant tonight. I'm excited to present to you the proposal today to remove the existing lattice tower and replace it with a new structurally more sound The existing lattice tower, as shown on the left, is 159 feet tall, as already mentioned. It includes transmission equipment for AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, and city-owned public safety equipment. As technology evolves and populations grow, cellular communications do become increasingly needed. And therefore, each carrier has analyzed their needs for the foreseeable future to continue providing coverages at speeds that the public demands and needs. During our due diligence, it was determined that the aging tower and its foundation could not be adapted to meet this future demand. The decision, therefore, was made to propose a new tower in its current location, as shown on the right, designed to accommodate future growth for each carrier as well as future city public safety needs. This new monopole tower will be shorter, at 140 feet. It will be slimmer in nature than the existing tower. The tower and equipment will be painted a sky blue color to help it blend with the natural backdrop, which in most cases is the sky, and give it a more uniform and streamlined appearance. In order to allow for the removal and construction of the tower while keeping uninterrupted service levels, three temporary facilities will be provided in the parking lot, as shown. On the left is the existing tower, if you're standing to the east of City Hall looking southwest. The photo on the right shows the existing tower removed and three temporary facilities in place. As mentioned by staff, these facilities are designed to be short-term in nature, about three to six months as needed, in order to deconstruct a tower, construct a tower, get the transmission equipment on, get them on air. Once that transmission equipment is placed on air, we can then remove the temporary facilities completely. It is our goal to get subsequent applications for building permits and anything else needed in before the end of the summer and finalized, so that construction can take place and this facility be on air before the end of this year. And that concludes my presentation. On behalf of AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, we do appreciate your consideration during this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to any comments from the public. So if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. And you may also speak online in the virtual format. I think we have that, but I will ask Ms. Scheck if we have anyone with their hands raised in the.
No, Mayor. No one with their hand up. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't see anyone here to speak, so we will go to close our public comment and go to questions from council. Ms. Nosterbeck.
Just a question about how the former tower did, like during hailstorms and stuff, and are we doing anything with this new tower to make it better?
I might defer to anybody else who is familiar with the history of the tower.
You know, I could just respond to the hailstorm we had in, what, 2017, right, which was pretty devastating. And I don't remember having any issues at that time. I'm not sure if our consultants know of any issues with their clients. I don't recall any issues. So I'm not sure if the new tower will withstand hail better than this current one, or if it's something you can speak to, or, it's a good question, but I don't think we've had any issues in the past.
Okay, well, then just do the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? I had a couple. I, just curiosity, will this provide better cell service for the public? Do we anticipate that?
The taller height will certainly provide better service than it would have if it was shorter. I'm seeing a head nod from our applicant, but yes, that is the plan to improve service.
Okay. And.
The antenna will be replaced as well as the structure.
Okay, so this is kind of brand-new, new technology.
Yes.
Okay, great. And do we, do we lose parking spaces during the interim period while the temporary facilities are in play?
Yes, just during the interim period.
Okay.
We will. I believe there were maybe eight that are displaced during that period.
Okay. So the work of the new, the temporary thing includes both the tower construction and the footing and whatever the tower, and then the footprint of the building or whatever the ancillary facilities are with it?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are all of my questions. Any other questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 31-2021, a resolution approving a special use permit and height variance to allow a new freestanding commercial mobile radio service, CMRS facility, on property Zoned Residential 2 R2 and located at 7500 West 29th Avenue for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of the Code of Laws. Two, the proposed special use permit and variance has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-114D and Section 26-115C of the Code of Laws. Three, the proposed freestanding CMRS facility has been found to comply with the supplementary regulations for new CMRS facilities in Section 26-615 of the Code of Laws, and with the following conditions. One, the applicant must apply for building permits for the temporary CMRS facilities with the building division. Two, the applicant must apply for and obtain a demolition permit to remove the existing freestanding CMRS facility, and must obtain a building permit to install the new facility with the building division with a color sample as part of the permit submittal. Three, all temporary CMS facilities must be removed within 30 days of the completion of the new tower. Four, the applicant must follow all applicable state and federal regulations as they pertain to the removal and installation of freestanding CMRS facilities. Five, all cell phone carriers must execute new lease agreements with the city of Wheat Ridge for the new facility. Six, approval of the special use permit for the freestanding CMRS facility runs with the land and is approved only as an accessory use.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Urban. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number three. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution number 33-2021, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Wheat Ridge and the Jefferson Conservation District for the Regenerate Wheat Ridge Growing Urban Agriculture Partnerships Project. The city and the Jefferson Conservation District, or JCD, developed and submitted a project proposal for the National Association of Conservation Districts, NACD, Urban Agriculture Conservation Grant Initiative. The proposal, titled Regenerate Wheat Ridge: Growing Urban Agriculture Partnerships, was awarded $50,000 in funding. A memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the parties is required to detail the purpose, term, goals, responsibilities, and reimbursement requirements for the collaboration.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't have a presentation this evening, but Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Then we will go without a staff presentation. I will open it up to any member of the public to speak on this agenda item number three. If you would like to speak, now is your opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak under this, for this item. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? Or do we have anyone online with their hand up? If you would like to speak on this virtually, put your hand up in the Zoom format, and we will bring you into the meeting.
No one with their hand up on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I will close the public comment portion of this hearing item and open it up to questions from council. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. O'Donnell, can you just explain a little bit of what the conservation grant is going to do? I know that I saw there are some events coming up that I saw on the Facebook page for the city Parks and Rec. And so can you explain some of those events that are going to be coming up for this grant money?
Sure. So there are two specific goals for the project, so I'll just mention.
One, just introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Karen O'Donnell, the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
So there are two goals for this grant. One is to increase regenerative urban agricultural production in Wheat Ridge by identifying eligible parcels of land and providing technical assistance to facilitate at least two local land producer partnerships using Happiness Gardens as a model. And I think actually, Councilmember Weaver could probably speak better to that than I could. She and Councilmember Hultein have participated in this process. But the second goal is connect the community with Happiness Gardens to establish it as a community hub to elevate awareness of regenerative urban agriculture, as well as current practices and opportunities to participate. So what you probably saw today on social media, we had an announcement of the different upcoming programs that are free to the public. They take place primarily at Happiness Gardens, but there is one at Lewis Meadows focusing on goats. But there's, I don't have the topics in front of me. I know one of them is dealing with dirt, one's bugs, one bees, a lot of different really cool topics. And we would really love to see the public participate and really learn about the rich history of agriculture that we have here in Wheat Ridge.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I saw in here a mention of a harvest festival. Is that going to be a new event that Wheat Ridge is having?
So it's related to this as well, so it'll be funded through this grant. But similar to those, the other educational programs, this will kind of be the culmination of that. So a lot of, we're hoping that the participants that take place in the educational programs will come to the Harvest Festival, as well as those gardeners at Happiness Gardens, and then, of course, anybody else from the public that would be interested.
Just kind of as a side note, Arvada has had a Harvest Festival annually for a very long time, and this could easily be confused with that. So I don't know if we've maybe considered a different name for it, but I definitely wouldn't want the two to be confused.
Noted, thank you.
Good. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell, for announcing that. And thank you, Ms. Dozeman, for noting that. I didn't realize that. No, this is, I just want to thank the city and Parks and Recreation for being supportive of this initiative with the Jefferson Conservation District. And it's pretty exciting, because it's really a way to bring together what's already happening in Wheat Ridge and acknowledging all the great traditions we have, and sort of marrying them with some of the new traditions, like why would we put goats in parks and graze? And just talking about some of the environmental science concepts behind some of these initiatives. So thank you, city of Wheat Ridge, and thank you, Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing, is there any more questions from council? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Ms. Weaver, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 33-2021, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Wheat Ridge and the Jefferson Conservation District for Regenerate Wheat Ridge Growing Urban Agriculture Partnerships Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to our next agenda item number four. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 08-2021, an ordinance adopting Section 16-69 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrians hindering the flow of traffic. At issue, the ordinance is intended to reduce motorist and pedestrian crashes by prohibiting actions by pedestrians that obstruct or hinder traffic, including pedestrians being physically in traffic lanes or extending objects, hands, et cetera, into traffic lanes.
Thank you. This is a ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. City Attorney Dahl and our Division Chief Lorenz are going to speak on this item.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. This ordinance council saw several months ago, actually quite a while ago, I think, adopted on first reading and then continued for second reading until tonight. This ordinance is part of a package and really works with, and in concert with, the next ordinance as well. And so the statements I would make, and I think also Division Chief Lorenz, would apply to both in terms of pedestrian traffic interactions and safety. And this ordinance is the shorter of the two and creates a new Section 16-70, excuse me, one ahead, creates a new section, New Section 16-69, pedestrian hindering the flow of traffic. And the key aspects of the ordinance are that there's a definition of to obstruct traffic. So that's what is being made unlawful. And you can see in the middle of the ordinance, the definition of obstructing traffic is, as it reads, "to render impassable or render passage unreasonable, inconvenient, or hazardous, including not limited conduct such as extending objects into the travel portion of the roadway." You'll notice also that, I think, as a result of the first reading discussion we had, in letter F for penalties, that it's a fine, there is no jail, or an alternative sentence as the municipal judge may determine. And council might remember, you saw the municipal judge within the last month or so in the renewal of his contract. And I thought it was helpful for you to hear from him, the various strategies that the judge frankly has always employed and now has to employ more because of the degree to which other remedies are not available, fines, et cetera, imprisonment are less available from municipal court. And I think he did a good job of describing the kinds of tools that he tries to use to get people to comply. So the ordinance specifically extends to that. You'll notice also in letter E that the, there's an exception, and you'll see this exception later in the next ordinance. exception later in the next ordinance, that it doesn't apply someone that's in a crosswalk and is traveling from one side of the highway to the other. So that's not hindering traffic, despite the fact the traffic might be slowing down for you, so they don't hit you. That's not hindering traffic if you're in a crosswalk. I'd like to ask Division Chief Lorenz to make any comments he would make about the safety basis for this ordinance, and I'll ask him to comment on the safety basis for the next one as well.
Thanks, Mr. Dahl. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Jim Lorenz, Division Chief in charge of patrol. Just want to express, you know, the police department's concern over pedestrian traffic accidents. As you know, over the past year, we've had some very serious accidents. And we hope that adding this type of ordinance will assist in protecting pedestrians as well as motorists and people riding in vehicles that can be hurt seriously when they're involved in accidents. This particular issue prohibits pedestrian obstruction or hindering traffic. And the police department recommends that this be approved. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to members of the public to speak on this Agenda Item Number Four. If you would like to speak on this, this is your opportunity. I have no one signed up to speak here in the room, but is there anyone here who is not signed up? You may do so, or you may come now, and I'll ask Ms. Scheck if we have speakers on the Zoom format who would like to speak on this.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, Mr. Justin Conyers has his hand up. So, Justin, I'm just going to unmute you, and you should be good to go.
Okay, Mr. Conyers, if you'd introduce yourself and give us your address, you may have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name's Justin Conyers. It's C-O-N-Y-E-R-S. I'm currently transient. And I was just wanting to ask a question in regards to this ordinance. Go ahead. Okay, if you want to ask a question, we, go ahead. Okay, I was wanting to find out where would be appropriate, other than, within the flow of traffic or within the crosswalks, to solicit for assistance?
Mr. Dahl?
Certainly. The public sidewalks within the city are open for that activity. And the ordinance here does not make that unlawful. In other words, Mr. Conyers, you can certainly solicit for assistance or otherwise approach people on public sidewalks. That's a traditional public forum. What the ordinance prohibits is reaching out from those sidewalks into traffic in a way that obstructs the traffic or hinders the traffic in any way. So stepping off from the sidewalk into the, into the drainpan, the gutter, off of the curb, into the traveled roadway, extending a hand or something into the traveled roadway would be hindering traffic. But remaining on the sidewalk and approaching people, as is often done, that's a traditional activity in the country, and the ordinance does not prohibit that.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Mr. Conyers?
Somewhat.
Okay. Did you have anything further tonight?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else out in the member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone else with their hands up?
We don't, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion in this item, and we will go to questions from council. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For both this ordinance and the next one, we have a fifteen days after publication section on the motion. And given that this is an actual health and safety issue, wouldn't we want to have a safety clause that would put it into effect immediately? Or is there any reason we would wait that fifteen days?
Be perfectly fine. Up to the police department if they wanted to maybe provide some department guidance to patrol. And I defer to Division Chief Lorenz for that. When there is a new ordinance that the patrol officers and officers on the street need to know how to watch out for and give warning for tickets for, they might appreciate the time to be able to put that guidance together, although, of course, if it were immediately effective, it would be effective tonight. And they could still do that guidance before they started asking officers to act on that. Division Chief, do you have an opinion on that?
We can certainly provide guidance to our officers right away and make it effective if necessary. It's not a problem.
Perfectly fine. As you well know, Mr. Urban, the way to do that would be in the effective date section of the ordinance, when, as, and if the ordinance is, there's a motion for approval of the ordinance, there could be a motion either to approve the ordinance and change Section Three effective date to take effect upon adoption, or you could run that as an amendment to a main motion.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing, and, Mr. Stites, may I have a motion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Zero-Eight Dash Twenty-Twenty-One, an ordinance adopting Section Sixteen Dash Sixty-Nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrians hindering the flow of traffic on second reading, and that it takes effect fifteen days after publication.
Second.
There is a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to encourage us to amend this to take effect immediately, given the immediate safety and health issue with this bill. So I think our officers will pick up on this rather quickly, so I don't think that's a problem there. So I would encourage us to amend that.
Are you making such an amendment?
I would move to amend the motion to be, take effect immediately.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment? We have a second by Ms. Hutchinson. Is there discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment? Okay, thank you. We will go back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council on the main motion as amended?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has also passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Five. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number Zero-Nine Dash Twenty-Twenty-One, an ordinance adopting Section Sixteen Dash Seventy of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrian use of roadway, center medians, and in connection therewith, amending Section Sixteen Dash One-Thirteen, sales and solicitation in certain places prohibited. The ordinance is intended to reduce motorist and pedestrian crashes by regulating center medians that are unsafe for occupation by pedestrians. The ordinance adopts a new section of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws governing pedestrians and traffic safety, and amends the current section on solicitation activities and adds a legislative declaration.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance to the council on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl again.
Okay, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. This ordinance, as I indicated earlier, sort of works in tandem with the one that was just adopted. But it is somewhat more complex, and I do want to identify some specific aspects of it that I think are important. I should also tell you that a very similar ordinance is being passed across the country. And more recently, there was a city in Utah, Sandy City, Utah, did a study of the center medians. This largely addresses the center medians within, in the middle of roadways that we're all familiar with. You're crossing a four-lane road, and there's a center median, and the light turns green for you, and you make it to the center median, a center island. Sometimes you can make it the rest of the way across, and sometimes you can't. The place where you get to wait in the middle is a, an area of temporary pedestrian refuge. At least that's how it's defined in this ordinance. And Sandy City went about a study, really, or an analysis of the center medians throughout the city, and determined that those lesser in width than, I forget what the dimension was, or those that were constructed of landscaping or boulders or rocks or river rock, which is so popular to use here in center medians, were not safe for persons to simply occupy in the same way persons may occupy a public sidewalk. And they enacted an ordinance similar to this that indicated that to hang out on that center median is an offense unless you're using it as a temporary pedestrian refuge, because during a traffic cycle, signal cycle, you're crossing the street. But it's not a place to stay. It's not a place to occupy for any purpose. And Sandy City was challenged on that, and went up on appeal in the U.S. Appeals Court for the Tenth Circuit, which is our circuit. It contains most of the western states, and we pay a lot of attention to decisions of the Tenth Circuit. Upheld that, upheld that ordinance. There was testimony from the police department in that case that there were near misses and other dangerous interactions between people that were on these center medians that really weren't designed for that, other than as a temporary pedestrian refuge. And thusly, this ordinance comes to you. And I want to make sure you heard that fact pattern and what has happened in the federal courts around that. With that in mind, I do want to make reference to some of the key aspects of the ordinance. You'll notice the first subsection, letter A, is a legislative declaration, and it goes on for some length in articulating what I just described, which is it's dangerous and it's not designed for occupation by pedestrians in any way other than as a temporary refuge when you're crossing the street, for the reason that it endangered the lives of the pedestrians and drivers. So that's the first point I would make. The second point I'd make, you'll notice there's a definition of higher-speed roadway, and that's a roadway within the City of Wheat Ridge within which a center median is present. That's important, because this section, this new section, only applies to center medians in higher-speed roadways. And so there's a, it's not all roadways within the city, it's center medians within these higher-speed roadways. The third thing I would mention is over on the second page, I think, it defines temporary pedestrian refuge area. And I went over that in my initial remarks, but you'll notice that that will become an exception in minute to any kind of offense. Subsection Six, excuse me, C, on the second page, is the heart of the ordinance in the sense of the offense. So it is unlawful for a person to occupy, or be on a central, a center median that isn't designed for that and has been posted, and we'll talk about that later, other than using it as a temporary pedestrian refuge, as you see under number one, during a single traffic cycles, traffic signal cycle. The other exceptions are for workers that are doing repair work that have other reasons, official reasons to be there. You'll also notice in letter D, the obligation is laid on the traffic engineer, and that would be city staff, to determine which ones of these center medians are unsafe, and they must be posted. So in order to serve as the basis for an offense, not only is it a center median in a higher-speed roadway, but it also has to have been posted. It's important that people know that it's unlawful to occupy that area, and we wouldn't want to be ticketing unless that were made very clear. So there may well be center medians that otherwise would be unsafe, but until they're posted, there wouldn't be any tickets issued. If you go over to the next page, letter G, again, this is the language about an alternative sentence, the sentencing authority of the municipal judge. This ordinance also, as you'll see in section two, addresses sales and solicitations in certain areas. It is common for cities to regulate the sales and solicitation in certain areas that are deemed to be unsafe, and that's what this section does. We have an existing Section Sixteen One-Thirteen of the code right now that makes it unlawful to solicit sales on the entries or exits to any highway included in the interstate highway system. What this ordinance does is two things. It makes a legislative declaration that does very much similar to the legislative declaration we've seen earlier about pedestrian and motorist safety, and specifically talks about the safety concerns on the entrance and exit ramps and the interstates within the city, to highlight the city's reasonable basis for regulating what otherwise is speech, honestly, sales and solicitation is speech, and it's important for the city to be very careful where it would limit speech. These particular areas the city is declaring are particularly hazardous and are not appropriate for that kind of activity, making it then unlawful only on the interstate highways and their exits and entrances. And you'll notice the interstate highway has been defined, so the language, it's in all caps, is the new material. The other material's existing material already in the ordinance. Thanks for your patience in listening to this thumbnail sketch of this ordinance. I'd also ask Division Chief Lorenz to make any comments he might want to make on both topics, the use of the center medians, and maybe the experience the police department has had or seen, as well as the entrance and exit ramps for the interstates within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Obviously, the higher the speed, the more dangerous an intersection can be. Injuries are more serious, more severe, and fatalities are common when you're, center medians normally are at busier, high-speed intersections. I think it's, if you, if you look at just driving home tonight from council, and you take a look at medians, you'll see the brick on the, on the ground there where the, where the median exists are usually broken up. It's very, very common for those things to, for traffic to cut across medians. And that, therein is the danger. That's when, when traffic is not paying attention, they're going a little too fast, they're trying to cut that corner, they're trying to beat that light, and that's where we see those serious kinds of things. So if we can prevent pedestrians from being in those dangerous areas, I think we will save lives, save injuries, reduce accidents. So we, police department definitely recommends that this ordinance be approved.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to comments from the public. If you would like to comment on Agenda Item Number Five, now is your opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak here in council chambers, and if there is anyone that hasn't signed, I'm glad to have you speak now. And I will ask Ms. Scheck if there's anyone online with their hands raised in the Zoom format. Happy to have them.
Yes. Oh, sorry. We have Deanne.
Okay, Deanne, if you would join us, and please give us your first name and your last name and your address, and then you'll be able to speak after that.
Yes, my name is Trina Thurman, and I live on Independence Street. My last name is spelled T-H-U-R-M-N. And I, I'm asking that you do pass this, this ordinance. It's not uncommon to see at least five transients congregating in the center median or sitting on chairs. If, if a car were to go out of control, you, you're, there's no way that they'll be able to get out of the way. What worries me is those people standing there, the, the people that have their babies with them or their dogs, and what a driver would have to go through accidentally hitting these people and taking them out. It is, it's dangerous. It's a safety hazard, and I don't want to see anyone hurt. That's, that's the last thing I want to see. And there are other ways of asking for donations in other places, but the center median is not wide enough to keep them safe. not wide enough to keep them safe. So I ask that you pass this.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else with their hands raised in the Zoom format?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then I don't see any other public comments, so we will close that portion of our item on this tonight, and I will open it up to questions from council. Before I close the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
I move, excuse me, I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2021, an ordinance adopting section 16-70 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrian use of roadway, center medians, in connection therewith amending section 16-113, sales and solicitation in certain places prohibited on second reading and that would take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stites. Is there a discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would, while the narrative has turned to traffic safety on these two items this fourth time around that we have seen it, I would just like to remind everybody that this originally began because people were complaining on how do we get our homeless off of our medians in our streets. The original, the way it read the original way is that they could be punished by not only fines but also jail time. And I just want to say that one of the things that we need to keep in mind with our unhoused population and our unhoused neighbors is that we shouldn't be putting more roadblocks in the way for them to be able to find permanent housing. So when Councilmember Urban moved it to a study session, which I appreciate for us to be able to go over some of those issues under the penalty sections, is why I'm supporting it this time and I didn't support it last time. I'd also like to let people know that our judge also has a homeless court, and so a fine is not necessarily what a person may end up with if they attend homeless court. What they may end up doing is getting connected to services. So I'll be supporting it this time around.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important as we look at this issue, we recognize that it's both about public safety and about addressing the issue of persons experiencing homelessness being in the roadway and understanding that this isn't the first action the city's taken on the issue of homelessness. We've provided housing, we've built housing, we've built housing with others, we've provided financial assistance to mental health organizations, and this is sort of a one piece of a larger puzzle that we've built to make sure that we're addressing this holistically as opposed to just coming out with this particular ordinance out of the gate and saying, "We can't stand in the middle of the roadway." That's just, I think it's important to know that we're doing this as a whole. And this is one of the enforcement elements of it, so this is more of the stick element of it, but I feel like Wheat Ridge has done it right by providing housing and making sure that we do the wraparound services, and now we're getting to this. So I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move now to agenda item number six. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution Number 30-2021, a resolution of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement concerning the proposed finance of certain activities and undertakings within the I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan area secured by the proposed incurrence of a bond by the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority to be secured by certain tax increment revenues generated by the plan area. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, will be issuing tax-exempt bonds this July for various capital projects within the I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan area. A majority of the revenues from the bonds will be used for city-initiated public improvement projects. An intergovernmental agreement between the city and renewal Wheat Ridge will detail the partnership between the two parties to fund and construct the public improvement projects.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Not really this evening. This is related to the earlier public hearing we had on the replenishment resolution, and as Councilmember Nosler Beck read into the record, the issue statement's pretty self-explanatory. It's a very simple resolution or IGA between the city and renewal Wheat Ridge to detail the partnership between the two parties. The URA will, renewal Wheat Ridge will provide the funding and the city will manage and construct the projects. Simple as that.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open it up for any comments from the public. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on agenda item number six, now is your opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. If there's anyone here who has not signed up and would like to speak at this time, now is your opportunity. And I'm going to ask Ms. Shek if we have anyone on the Zoom format with their hand up, and the answer is no. Okay, and I don't see anyone, so we'll close our public comment portion and go to any questions from council. Seeing none, Ms. Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 30-2021, a resolution of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement concerning the proposed finance of certain activities and undertakings within the I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan area secured by the proposed incurrence of a bond by the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority to be secured by certain tax increment revenues generated by the plan area.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 32-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,134,656 for the purpose of funding employee positions, vehicles, priority projects, and other operating expenditures that were excluded from the 2021 budget due to COVID-19-related budget constraints. At issue, the 2021 budget was adopted based on conservative revenue projections and with minimal expenditures sufficient to deliver quality services to the community while maintaining a healthy budget reserve. The 2021 budget excluded funding for some vacant and new employee positions, fleet replacements, technological investments, priority projects and initiatives, and staff training and development due to the economic uncertainty caused by the pandemic. Given the strength of Wheat Ridge's local economy, combined with the continued demand for services, staff requests that council restore a number of positions, vehicles, projects, and initiatives to the 2021 budget.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Hoppe read into the record, and as you remember, last summer and last fall during the budget process for this year's budget, we were very transparent with you all and the public about our conservative take on the budget due to COVID-19 and the uncertainty of the economy and what was going to happen this year. So we were very, very, very conservative with both expenditures and revenue projections for this year's budget. And in my budget message to you all, we listed about $1.5 million worth of budget items that we did not include in the budget to be conservative, and we called that our wish list and made you aware as council that we would be coming back potentially mid-year this year if revenue is allowed to bring some things back into the budget, and that's why we are here this evening. Fortunately, things are doing very well in Wheat Ridge. We're very fortunate. We actually did much better through the pandemic than we expected and still doing much, even doing better this year than we expected. We did, the final 2021 budget was adopted with a projected year-end reserve of 21%. This budget supplemental will drop that to 18%. However, we're projecting quite a few more revenues than we adopted in the budget. One example is we're projecting probably over $1 million more in building-type use tax and fees than we budgeted for. And then also the SCL Lutheran Campus redevelopment, they are at work. Some of you were at the groundbreaking just, was that last week? Last week? And so they are pulling permits and paying for those permits, and we're probably going to see anywhere between $6 and $7 million of revenues from those permits this year, which we did not budget for. So with those revenues and then based on how the budget's adopted with the revenue projections and expenditure projections, we should have a reserve, even with this supplemental this evening, in the mid-30s this year and potentially higher. So doing very well overall, and we're not even mentioning the American Rescue Act dollars that the city is going to be receiving. We just found out we're going to be receiving about $1.2 million more than we were told a few months ago, so a total of about 7.3-ish. And we'll get those in two allotments. We'll get half this year in a few weeks and half next year. There are some strings attached to that money, so I don't want to count my chickens or count my turkeys, Ms. Weaver, before they hatch, because we're not sure how we can use that money and how that will impact our reserves. But very good news, development and growth in the city is amazing. This is, I think, our busiest year ever, last year and this year. So doing really well, so I'm not concerned about this supplemental. The major categories that we're asking for some supplemental budget increases are to fill some vacant positions that we did not fill. Two new positions specifically in the police department, both crime prevention officer and a property crimes detective, bringing our sustainability coordinator from half-time to full-time, replacing vehicles, which we held off on, seven vehicles that were deferred, a few priority projects for city council one, including the 44th Avenue Planning Project that was put on hold, and some funding for some technology improvements and some staffing training and investment in our staff and a few other equipment and services. With that, Ms. Shek, did I miss anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so. Mr. Goff, thank you. I guess I'd just note that this request also includes an FTE increase in courts that is negligible. I just want to make sure it's cleared. Yeah, it's negligible financially, it actually, but it does increase the FTE. It reduces our contractual labor, so we up it by, I think, a total of 1.75 positions and we eliminate two contractual positions. We've just done a lot of analysis about why it's been very hard to retain court marshals and also our front desk security. And we've come up with a plan for three full-time court marshals to cover court and the front desk, and these can be then full-time employees that we can treat really well and nurture and love as full-time employees and make sure that we keep them. So that's also included in this package. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to members of the public to speak on agenda item number seven. So I don't have anyone signed up to speak. If there's anyone here who hasn't signed up and would like to speak, you may do so at this time. And I'll ask Ms. Shek if we have anyone with their hands raised in the Zoom format. That's another way to come into our meeting. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to sort of share some of the good news that we've got going on, which is great to hear. But I don't hear anyone, so I'll open up for questions from council. So my counsel is pretty good. Thank you, Mr. Goff, for a thorough report. And with that, Ms. Hoppe, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 32-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,134,656 for the purpose of funding employee positions, vehicles, priority projects, and other operating expenditures that were excluded from the 2021 budget due to COVID-19-related budget constraints.
Who has a second? Second by Ms. Dozeman.
It was Councilmember Nosler Beck.
Oh, it was Councilmember Nosler Beck, I'm sorry.
I know we sound a lot alike.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Weaver first, and then Ms. Hoppe.
I will be supporting this tonight. I just wanted to thank the city again for what an amazing job they've done this last year with dealing with our budget and reorganizing, and I think we owe it to give it back to you at this point. So really excellent job, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that I appreciate staff being able to make recommendations and priorities with a tight belt last year and also knowing that there were going to be some requests that could potentially come to us if we were doing well. One thing I would just like to note is our special study session after our meeting tonight, we'll be going over the resident survey, and in that resident survey, we have very strong support from our residents for additional crime prevention officers, strong support around sustainability, and strong support around redeveloping our 38th and 44th Avenue. So three of these add-backs are also priorities of our community, and so thank you very much for taking those into consideration and moving this forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I was quite ecstatic reading this, and I think it speaks to our resilience as a community. We've seen a lot of innovation and adaptability amongst our businesses and our city staff, and I just want to say thank you for coming in at a conservative estimate and really understanding what it was to shrink our budget and think futuristically and also your transparency in coming back to us and asking for us to fund these projects. I think you guys have all done a phenomenal job throughout this entire pandemic, and I really just want to thank all of my co-council members, city staff, and really the community for showing up and being there for each other throughout all of this and really proving that we could make it through, and I feel like we wound up better on the other side. So thank you all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number eight. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion approving the revised council rules of order and procedure dated June 14, 2021. At issue, the Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge provides that the council may determine its own rules of procedure for meetings. Section B of suspension and amendment of these rules states, "These rules may be amended or new rules adopted by a majority vote of city council members present at a regular or special meeting, provided that the proposed amendments or new rules shall have been submitted in writing to city council at a proceeding meeting or a study session. Any city council member or the mayor may initiate an amendment of these rules in the manner provided for initiation of agenda items by Rule VD. These rules shall be reviewed and revised by the city council as needed and as provided for herein."
Thank you very much. This will be a motion of the council, and Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this one?
How much does council want in presentation?
Minor, very minor presentation.
Minor. All the changes were listed numerically in order in your council action form. There is a redline version also that was provided to you all, fairly simple changes. There is one mistake I made. I apologize that the mayor called out to me this morning. That is number four on your, in your council action form. I struck the wrong will and replaced it with "may." It's supposed to strike the second will and replace it with "may," so we can make that correction. I don't know if they need to make an amendment to say that or anything, but otherwise, fairly simple changes that we went through in detail at the study session last week. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. We will ask for the members of the public to comment on this agenda item before we go to questions from council. go to questions from council. If there's any member of the public here, and I don't have anybody signed up, but once again, if you're here and would like to speak on this Agenda Item Number Eight, now is your opportunity. And we will take anyone in the Zoom format with their hands raised, and I don't see anyone there, so I don't see anyone needing to speak. So we'll close our public comment portion and open up to any questions from council. The only one I had is, Mr. Dahl, should we handle this other wrong, the wrong will coming out as an amendment or otherwise?
I think what you can do in the recommended motion is to, rather than with following amendments, you could just say "as corrected."
Okay.
And if there are other typos, we'll find them too, and that will cover it.
And actually, the language in this council action form does say "strike the last will and replace with 'may.'" Just in the actual redline, I scratched the first will, so the council action form's correct.
Yeah, okay. So "as corrected" really covers it really well.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, then Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move to approve the revised council rules of order and procedure dated June 14, 2021, as corrected.
Looks like we got a second by Mr. Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Actually, will the clerk please poll the council?
I have polled the council, Mr. Mayor, and the motion has passed unanimously.
Well, thank you very much. It's good to, glad we were able to accomplish that. That concludes our regular agenda item tonight. I will go and get back to my regular agenda, but I believe that usually we move to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I know we still have a quick study session, but I just want to thank council, the mayor, for their support on the budget supplemental, and all the continuous, consistent thank-yous and goodwill that you've had for us over the last year and a half. And I want to thank you guys. You guys are part of that. You did a great job, and were there for us. And that's the reason there's some flowers there this evening. You all know that the city won the All-America City Award, and we are an All-America City and so proud. And just to read a little bit about what it is, since 1949, the National Civic League has recognized and celebrated the best in American civic innovation with the prestigious All-America City Award. The 2021 awards event held virtually recognized communities that overcame the overwhelmingly challenges, overwhelming challenges of the past year to unite during difficult times and build equity and resilience. We had, led by Councilmember Noslerbeck and Rachel Hulteen, and great staff and great community members, we won. We were selected out of the whole country. We were one of 20 finalists, and then after a lot of work, a lot of work, and put on a presentation, we were one of 10 winners across the whole country. So very, very proud, and you guys deserve this, and so congratulations. And we want to celebrate a little bit more. June 28, we're gonna bring back maybe a proclamation, and once Councilmember Hulteen is back, she's out on vacation right now, and we want to make sure she's here for that. So just real thrilled that Wheat Ridge is a great community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing other than to say it's delightful to see all of you again, and to see you in person and work with you in person. I really enjoy it so much more, and I'm delighted to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will go now to elected officials' matters, and I'll start with Ms. Noslerbeck.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to take a moment and recognize all of the staff that helps with the All-America City Awards. Ally Scheck, Mary Ann, Steve Art, he's not here, Patrick, thanks for giving us the okay to go forward with this, because it was a huge lift. On your entire staff, Sarah Spalding, I don't know if she's here either. It was really a community-led application that we submitted, and the way that our staff works with community is incredible. And I think it is a perfect example of what this last year was all about. We found a way to, you know, make the dream work, because we have incredible, an incredible team. So thanks, everyone. What an experience, and I'm so glad to have my Friday mornings back. But thanks, thanks to everyone. Just, I can't wait till the 28th when we can really celebrate.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
I just want to say it's great to be back. Let's stay healthy.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate all of the hard work to win the All-America City. I wanted to wish everybody a Happy Flag Day, which is today, and I was able to attend the groundbreaking for Lutheran's new campus, and I'm really excited about that. I've worked for them for a few years now, and being able to have a new state-of-the-art medical facility in our city is going to be wonderful. I'm really looking forward to not only the revenue generated for the city, but also the economic benefits that it's going to bring to Wheat Ridge. It was a great ceremony. I really appreciated what was said. You can tell that Lutheran's been a wonderful partner in Wheat Ridge, and they really care about those populations that are on the fringe within our communities. And I wanted to thank them for, you know, their hospitality for all of these years. It's been wonderful, and I'm really looking forward to that public-private partnership. I think it's worked out for us. And I am also very happy to be back on the dais, so it's wonderful to see all of you again this week.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the staff that made it possible for us to come back in person. Having us stand here and say the Pledge of Allegiance is something that was very simple and somewhat unnoticed before, but having us come back together and say that in person made it feel like we're back to normal, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, Mr. Goff. Ms. Weaver and I had a study session item on the trees, the tree program coming up at some point, and then we just kind of wanted some clarification on that, where the program is and what's going forward with that.
Nothing's been scheduled yet, if that's your question. We did get, Mayor Protam and I did receive an email from Councilmember Weaver, and Janice and I, Ms. Hoppe and I, meet on Wednesday, and we'll look at the schedule and see when we can get it in.
I know that's something we really wanted to look at this summer to make sure it got implemented, so thank you, sir. Again, I'll just thank you to the staff. Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you to the council members who participated in the All-American City Award and the program. That's looked like a lot of hard work. You guys did a great job with that. So that's a big feather in the cap for Wheat Ridge, and that should be something that we're all proud of, so thank you. And we talked about the economic recovery today and all the money that we have coming in. A lot of that is due to people shopping local, so I'll just say it again, as I usually do, shop local. If you can find it, find it and buy it at Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you. Let's see, a couple things. I've had a couple constituents ask me about how they can still get involved with what's happening at Lutheran, and I just want to make sure I'm saying this correctly. They can go to What's Up Wheat Ridge, and there's a ton of information out there. So if you have more questions or want to comment on the Lutheran campus redevelopment. Also, I had some questions around what's being built south?
North.
Thank you. Should know this. Northwest of the Circle K at 38th and Kipling, and that will be a franchise automotive repair place, I believe.
Correct.
So just to answer those questions, and then my last thing. First of all, I want to thank the city and Park and Rec again for just their attentiveness and excitement about this grant that we received around regenerative agriculture. Park and Rec is sponsoring the first goat parade, happening this weekend from, I'm gonna have to do directions again, from the west side of Prospect Valley on Quail. Help me out. So Prospect Valley Elementary, Quail is on the west side, so there is a right-of-way where the goats currently are that the city has, and that will be the meetup location at 10:30 a.m. on Saturday. If any of you all would like to come walk with the goats, we'll be walking to Lewis Meadows, we'll be walking south to 32nd, and then down 32nd, and then north around on Swadley, I believe, to get to Lewis Meadows. And we will have, thank you to the police department, we will also have an escort for the goats, right? So if anybody wants to join, it'll be a lot of fun. Wear a sun hat. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo my appreciation to be able to be back in the building and to be able to see some familiar faces. Hi, Vivian and Dom. Good to see you guys. And then I also wanted to echo Councilmember Weaver's, the What's Up Wheat Ridge, not only for Lutheran, but What's Up Wheat Ridge has so much great information on there about Wadsworth, Lutheran, there are, there are like surveys on there, like it's where we're gathering a lot of information, so please go there, give us your opinion. If you have opinion on what should happen on the Lutheran legacy campus, there's opportunity for you to place that into What's Up Wheat Ridge. One thing I just wanted to clarify, a question that was asked of me this weekend, is Lutheran owns the property, so they can just do whatever they want with it. And to be really clear, that property is zoned for hospital use, so if it's not going to be hospital use, they can't just do whatever they want with it, which is why we're doing all of the public communication and public meetings, so that we can have a new sub-area plan, which Lutheran is paying for that sub-area plan, before anything can be done on that. So your opinion is not getting lost in the jungle, so please let us know what you think would be great with that property on What's Up Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. And just before I don't forget it, Mr. Clerk Kirkpatrick?
I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I want to congratulate the whole city and thank the citizens and the staff and the counselors who worked really hard on a great award presentation, and you know, they did a great job. I was very, very proud to be part of Wheat Ridge and the things that are going on here. And you know, the underlying, one of the great underlying things is that there's so many great things happening in Wheat Ridge that you can talk about, so thanks to all of the citizens in our community who make it all happen. I was really honored to be part of the SCL groundbreaking the other day, and they're gonna build a really first-class replacement hospital, you know, for our community, and it's gonna give us access to state-of-the-art, advanced health care and available right here in our community. And I'm really thrilled that they're gonna be part, continue to be part of our community. And it really, the opportunity to work on the legacy campus at 38th Avenue, this is a major piece of land right in the middle of Wheat Ridge, and I hope everyone will take an opportunity to speak your voice on what you think ought to go there, because as Ms. Hoppe said, it is still very much in play, and there's huge opportunities there. So I hope we're very thoughtful about that. I know that we will, and I'm looking forward to that. I want to recognize that our city facilities are open. We're here at City Hall. Thank you all for joining us. Great to be home. You're right, Mr. Urban. Great to say the Pledge of Allegiance in the same room. But also a note that our active adults center is open, our rec centers are open, and the pools, hopefully, Mr. Goff, we got some good lifeguards in play and...
We're working on it still. So if you know anybody out there, we're still looking.
Well, I barely fit into a suit, but, you know, I want to say that we've got, as part of our effort to address some of the issues that happen to our city from people experiencing homelessness, we're having a cleanup day. We've got, I believe, four cleanup days scheduled for the summer that Local Works is leading. Our first day is on June 26, from 8 to 12 a.m., on Kipling Avenue, just north of 44th Avenue. So if you would like to come and help us work together to keep our city clean and make this a beautiful place, even a more beautiful place to live, we hope you'll join us. And it's summertime, you may have noticed, it's getting hot out there. School is out, lots of kids outside playing. Please be careful as you drive, just slow down and enjoy your life here in Wheat Ridge. If there's no more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourn. We'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we will come back for a study session. and then we will come back for a study session. All right, let's... All right, so let's gather back and we will get going. Okay, I would like to call to order the special study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for June 14th, 2021. We have one agenda item on our docket this evening is number one, the 2021 Resident Survey Draft Report. So that's what we will be talking about. And before we get our staff presentation or orientation, I want to, well, no, we ought to...
Do we do public comment?
Yeah, I want to do public comment. We haven't done that. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. I don't think I have anyone signed up to speak, but if you would like to speak, now is an opportunity to speak about the survey. And I will ask Masek if we have anyone online who has their hand up. We would like certainly welcome their opinions on this item. But it doesn't look like we have any, so I will just ask Mr. Goff if you would like to introduce this item.
I will. I will actually just turn it over to Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant to the City Manager. This was her project, and she'll introduce our guest, who is on Zoom.
Ms. Schilling, nice to have you with us tonight.
Great to be here. Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. We are joined here tonight by Lori Urban. She is the Director of Client Success at the National Research Center. She'll be presenting the 2021 Draft Resident Survey tonight. And the purpose of the presentation is to highlight data and findings from the most recent survey. The survey does serve as the city's consumer report card and is an informational tool for the city to measure its performance. The survey encompasses best practices and is statistically valid, sampling 4,500 households in the city, or being sent to 4,500 households in the city. The Wheat Ridge Resident Survey was last administered in 2018, and it was scheduled to be administered again in 2020, and then was delayed one year due to the pandemic. So we are here tonight to see the draft results of those surveys, and so I will now turn it over to Lori Urban.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and make sure everyone can see that. Can everyone see my screen so far?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Mayor Starker, and members of the council for having me here tonight, virtually, to present the results of the 2021 Resident Survey. I have been the project manager for the city survey since its initiation in 2002. So I have a very long trend line to follow with you all. And a special thanks to Mary Ann for helping out with this project this year and last year. We had a stop-start situation, a lot of communities did. So she did a great job kind of getting all of the feedback we needed from staff, helping me with my many, many questions. So I really appreciate her partnership in this effort.
Lori, can we interrupt you real quick? Can you minimize your screen? Your video is over the power...
Oh, I see.
Can you see that?
Did that work?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, thank you. It's not my first rodeo, but apparently it seems like that. So as Mary Ann kind of said, these kinds of surveys are about transparency and accountability. They're one tool that the city can use to measure its performance, not only against itself over time, but also against other communities across the nation and in the front range through the benchmark survey database that we have that contains resident survey opinions from millions of Americans across the country. We have over 600 communities in our database, and we're able to make comparisons for questions on Wheat Ridge's survey that are comparable to those that other communities have asked. This survey also brings in a different voice than the city might hear from typically, not just those who contact staff or council members, but those who also, or those who attend council meetings. This is a random sample of residents, so you can hear from a really broad representation of your community. This is a summary of the very lengthy report that you all have received. So I'm happy to answer any questions as I go. Feel free to just stop me and we can get those answered. So we kind of talked a little bit about what these kinds of surveys are for. The city has a pretty lengthy trend line, which is fantastic. The best measure, in our opinion, is to yourself over time. And because you've been tracking that, you definitely have a long trend line to kind of look back and see how, where you've had successes, maybe find some things that maybe didn't work and that you wanted to change. You can measure your performance, incorporate these ratings into any kind of strategic planning or budgeting measures. We have many clients who do that, as well as track yourself or compare yourself to other communities who are doing these kinds of surveys as well. This was a scientific survey. What makes it scientific, a lot of people ask? We use a lot of best practices in survey research in order to implement Wheat Ridge's survey. That includes using USPS postal service lists, which has every valid postal address in your community. We geocode those addresses to make sure they fall within the boundaries of Wheat Ridge, as well as geocode those to each of the council districts so that we can compare different districts and ratings in different sections of the community. We mail three contacts to each randomly selected household. We include the city's logo, the mayor's signature, in order to kind of increase the validity of the study and make sure residents know that this is a legitimate effort conducted on behalf of the city. We oversample multifamily households as well, because we know they tend to respond at lower rates to surveys. So we want to make sure that from the get-go, we're trying to increase the representation. And then on the backend, we know that homeowners, women, older adults are going to respond at higher rates to the survey. So we want to make sure that we look at those who responded and compare them to what we know actually exists in the community. And we compare that to the census or the American Community Survey data. So for the city, we use very similar methods to what we have done in 2018, which included mailing to about 4,500 randomly selected households. There was an online response option that people could go to respond online. We did include passcodes on the survey so that we knew that we were hearing from one respondent per household. And then we got 100, just over 1,000 completed surveys for a 25% response rate, which is great. This is very similar to what we saw in 2018. Typically, we see response rates decline. 2018's response rate was 26%. So very similar and a very strong response, which gives you all about a 3% margin of error around the survey results. As I mentioned on the prior slide, we did weight the results to represent the adult population in Wheat Ridge and provide national and front-range benchmark comparisons when they are available. We also include in the report appendices some demographic and geographic subgroup comparisons, just so you can see how different subgroups of your community feel about different issues that we asked about on the survey. So the remaining slides will provide some high-level overviews of the results, and this generally is outlined in the key findings that you can find in the executive summary of the report. Firstly, Wheat Ridge residents continue to give high ratings to quality of life in this city. We had about 8 in 10 residents rate the quality of life in Wheat Ridge as excellent or good, which was similar to what we have seen in 2018 and has been stable since 2012. This rating was similar to both the national and front-range averages. We also asked participants if they felt that their quality of life would improve, stay the same, or decline over the next five years. And over half felt that it was going to improve over the next five years. And this rating was slightly lower than what we saw in 2018, 62%. But still, more people felt it would improve than decline, which was about 23% felt it would decline. We asked about several aspects of quality of life living in Wheat Ridge, and most of those were rated positively by about 2/3 of respondents. These evaluations tended to be similar to what we saw in 2018 with the exception of the physical attractiveness of the community, which you can kind of see, and you'll see throughout the slideshow, that little blue arrow next to that rating on the bottom, 59%, indicates that there was an increase or a decrease between 2018 and 2021. We did see that rating increase from 2018. Ratings where we had comparisons available, which is to all of these items except for physical attractiveness, tended to be similar to the benchmark groups. But Wheat Ridge as a Place to Retire actually was above the front-range benchmark. About 8 in 10 were likely to recommend and planned, recommend living and plan to remain in Wheat Ridge for the next five years. These ratings did decline slightly from 2018, and Wheat Ridge residents were more likely than those living in other front-range communities to recommend living in Wheat Ridge to anyone who asked. Respondents valued the city's outdoor amenities and the offerings provided. We asked about several characteristics of the community, and out of 25, these were among the highest rated, with at least 70% saying that these items were excellent or good, availability of parks, paths and walking trails, bike trails, rec opportunities, and overall natural environment. And all of these ratings were similar to 2018. However, fewer residents in 2021 gave excellent or good reviews to recreation opportunities. I think may feel obvious to most people that it's very likely due to COVID that we saw a decline in these ratings and is not unique to Wheat Ridge. We've seen declines in recreation opportunities or usage of recreation opportunities lower in most communities who surveyed in 2020 and in 2021. It is notable that the availability of paths and walking trails was higher than both benchmark groups in Wheat Ridge. And 2021 respondents reported greater ease of biking and walking in the community, and ease of bike travel also received ratings that exceeded the national averages. Parks and Recreation Services provided by the city also were very highly rated. Recreation facilities and maintenance of existing parks were given higher ratings in 2021 compared to 2018. Recreation facilities in Wheat Ridge also were assessed higher than the national average. We also asked about the importance of each of these services, and the importance of city park maintenance and recreation facilities increased from 2018 to 2021. A majority of the community feel that it is welcoming of all residents, but we did see some differences by different types of residential demographic subgroups. We asked a new question on the survey this year that included 12 items, asking about how inclusive the community is for people of different backgrounds and cultural beliefs. At least half gave excellent or good ratings to nine of the 12 aspects that we asked about. These two, making residents feel welcome in business establishments and making residents feel welcome overall, received the highest ratings. Making residents feel welcome overall was similar to the national benchmark. And the two there at the bottom, valuing residents from diverse backgrounds and attracting people from diverse backgrounds, were among the lowest rated. We also saw, not on the slide here, we asked about treating all residents fairly. About 58% of residents said that the community does an excellent or good job doing that, and that rating was also similar to the national and front-range averages. When we looked at differences of ratings of inclusivity by council districts and respondent demographics, the first set of bullets there are the kind of subgroups, respondent subgroups that we saw were less likely to give positive ratings to those aspects of inclusivity. So District 4 residents, females, respondents with household incomes between $25,000 and $49,999, as well as residents age 35 or older. And we didn't see many differences, if any, by race or ethnicity, if people rent or own their homes, as well as if those homes are attached, condos, townhomes, apartments versus single-family homes. We did see residents still feel safe around the community, and they prioritize resources for mental health services as well as relationships among the community and the police department. Perceptions of safety were strong, with at least 8 in 10 feeling very or somewhat safe in each of these areas in the community. They felt somewhat less safe on the trail system and on roadways, with about 7 in 10 still saying that they felt very or somewhat safe. Feelings of safety in homes and neighborhoods did decrease in 2021, although these ratings may have been influenced at least by some of the unrest that we're seeing across the country that's been kind of presented in the national media. But it could be something to look into and dig a little deeper if you find that those ratings don't necessarily jive with data, that other data or other resources that you've collected. And when we compared to the benchmarks, we did have just two of these items that could be compared. Safety in parks and playgrounds was similar to the national and front-range averages, while safety in neighborhoods was lower when compared to the nation. We also asked how important it was for the city, for the Wheat Ridge Police Department, to prioritize resources in seven different areas over the next 12 months. to prioritize resources in seven different areas over the next 12 months. The three shown here were those that were given the highest priorities, with, as you can see, a pretty significantly larger proportion of respondents saying that solving crimes was an essential priority for the police department, and this was an increase from the rating given in 2018. More residents in 2021 also prioritized solving property crimes, and we did see slightly fewer prioritizing crime prevention in 2021, which in the question wording, we had the item as crime prevention with the parenthetical node, school resource officers, neighborhood watch, and the citizens' police academy. We also gathered resident opinion about their priorities for seven different initiatives or services the police department should have in the next two years. About six in 10 or more felt each was a high or medium priority, and these four were the highest of those seven priorities. Adding officers in public schools was given the lowest priority, with about 57% selecting that that was a high or a medium priority. And when we looked at how those ratings compared to 2018, we did see some of those priorities get, have a reduced priority in 2021, including adding officers in public schools, increasing the visibility of police, and adding surveillance cameras in high-crime areas. Homelessness was a greater concern in 2021 compared to 2018. Given the pandemic, it's not necessarily surprising that it is a greater concern in 2021. About 77% said that this was a major or moderate problem compared to 61% in 2018. Similarly, we asked how important it was for the city to contribute funding to some community-based programs that are provided to people who are homeless, and more people in 2021 felt that it was essential or very important for the city to contribute funding to substance abuse programs, as well as shelters for severe weather and housing and rental assistance programs. Many support the city allowing and regulating accessory dwelling units or ADUs, and not many said that they were necessarily going to use them for different kinds of uses. So we had about two-thirds of residents support the city allowing and regulating existing and new ADUs. That was a new question that we added this year. We had 15% say that they neither support, about 15% they neither support nor oppose this plan, and slightly more than that 15% between 17 and 21% opposed that action. We had at least 58% of respondents felt it was essential or very important for the city to implement different regulations for ADUs, with the most important being limiting the number of people allowed in the ADU. We did see a significant increase in the number of people who felt it was important for the city to require the property owner to either live in the main house or in the Of those who would consider adding an ADU, about seven in 10 would add one for an elderly or disabled family member. These ratings were lower when compared to 2018, and about half of respondents said they would be likely to add an ADU for any of the other reasons we listed that you can kind of see on the left side of the screen there, for their own use, rental income, visitors. It's important to note that between 23 and 31% selected don't know or not applicable when answering this question, and that's kind of where we made the assertion that those people may be less likely to want an ADU or to use an ADU. We did see that environmental sustainability is important, however, we did see that there was some lower importance placed on this issue in 2021 compared to 2018. They evaluated the importance of 11 possible areas for environmental sustainability efforts the city could take that may or may not increase costs for taxpayers, and this was outlined in the survey question. About six in 10 or more felt that nine of the 11 initiatives were essential or very important, so still a majority felt that most of these items were important for the city to pursue. Creating walkable communities, ensuring accessibility and access to public transit, as well as residential recycling and composting, were the most important environmental sustainability-focused areas, and these tended to decrease where we had comparisons over time, for five of those 11. We did see that those areas decreased as far as the level of importance that residents placed on them. Overall, respondents gave very positive reviews to the city government performance. Residents gave the highest ratings yet to the overall performance of the city government, with about two-thirds saying that the city is doing an excellent or good job. While this evaluation was similar to what we saw in 2018, it was statistically higher than what the ratings were given in 2015. We also asked about other aspects of the city government performance, all of which also received positive scores by at least half of respondents. The work quality of city employees was given the highest marks, followed by elected officials acting in the best interest of the community, which we saw a statistically significant increase from 2018. And when we had comparisons available to the benchmarks, generally Wheat Ridge residents gave ratings that were similar to both the nation and the front range. We saw about just over one-third of employees reported having had contact with a city employee in the 12 months prior to the survey. This was similar to what we saw in past years, but those rates of contact were lower than what we saw in other benchmark or other communities who have asked this question. That's not necessarily a bad thing. It could be a good thing, but the city is doing a great job of getting communication out to residents in other ways rather than them needing to actually call or email a city representative. Of those who had contact, they were asked to rate their interaction with the employee, and at least seven in 10 of those who had contact gave excellent or good reviews to each of these aspects of their engagement with that city employee. These assessments were similar to what we saw in 2018, but were on the rise from 2015. And that's all I have for you tonight, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We will open it up for questions. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Thank you, Lori, for your presentation. My question is, when you get into the, like, of the report, when you get into, like, page, where does it even start? Comparisons of survey results over time, so like page 141 of the survey report. So it'll say, like, Wheat Ridge as a place to live in 2021, 88%, and then underneath it, it says C and F, and then under 2018, it says C, D, E, F, G. So what do those letters represent? Because I looked around, and I was trying to figure out that code, and I couldn't figure that out.
Sure, that's definitely a common question that we get. There is a little explanation and kind of an outline of that on the page above it, but essentially, this is kind of a higher level or a more precise way to test differences between different subgroups of responses. So for Wheat Ridge as a place to live, that rating 2021, you can see that 88% say that that's excellent or good. Below that, you see the C and the F. What that indicates is that the ratings given in 2021 are statistically significantly higher than those given in 2015, as well as those given in 2006. So if you see a letter underneath one of the ratings, that means that that year's rating is statistically higher than those in column C and column F. Similar pattern for the demographic cross tabs and the geographic cross tabs as well.
Yes, and that description is actually in this report. So thank you. I was like, I was looking through there, and I'm like, I don't understand this, but then I totally skipped the instruction page, which is what I should have been trying to read, is the instructions. So thank you very much. I would just like to note, it's interesting that, I just want to say, as elected officials, we're doing a much better job than 2015. We were really in the doghouse in 2015, if you look at the historical data. So thanks for putting this report together.
Additional questions or observations, discussion? There's a lot of data points here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention that, yeah, there's a lot of data here this evening. We, staff still hasn't had time to dig into this, so we're going to do that, and we'll come forward with any recommendations that we see, and as part of the budget process or other issues, but if there's something you guys see, please let us know before that.
Yes, a lot of good reading in here. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Goff, for saying that. I just sort of want to understand the ADU comments and sort of how to process that. So that's not for tonight, but that you all will bring it back as separate sort of issues. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron. Yeah, and one observation, there were two big ones that stood out to me, and one of them was the amount of support we had from our community to support mental health. And then the other one was the number of people who said that they have never interacted with our Parks and Recs program is significantly high, but then when you look at the quality, how people rate the quality of our Parks and Recs program, it's also extremely high. So what kind of stood out to me was, how do we, what can we do to make sure that we're getting our community involved in, obviously, these high-quality programs that not very many people are being involved in, but the ones who are, are finding it very high quality?
That may have been COVID-related, too. I think, I think was the question, Laura, do you remember, in the last 12 months, how many, how much interaction have you had with the Parks and Recs? So they may have, because of COVID, had less. I was surprised by that rating, too, because it's usually higher, I think.
Yeah, yeah. You've got to be open. Okay? Or it helps, anyway. All right? Any additional discussion? Well, Lori, thank you very much for joining us tonight. It's a great report, a lot of information. We appreciate you working on this, so thanks so much.
Thanks for having me, and feel free to follow up if you have any questions as you start to digest the information. I know it's a lot.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
If there's no more further discussion, we will move past our item number one and go directly to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Well, I want to make sure that on item number three, we give the elected officials plenty of opportunity to opine here on the dais. So is there any, anybody have anything before we adjourn our meeting? Okay, so we are going to adjourn our study session. Thank you for being here. We are, we are back in study session a week from tonight in this room. So please be careful out there, and good night.